Greetings from Humpty Dumpty Avenue! We are live, back to the game's daily premonition. Let's play, let's go! Hello my fellow gamers, welcome, welcome back to the game here. Welcome back to Devil's Premonition. Last time we did some little side quest stuff which got a little tedious and I pretty much wasted your time. We go up here... And oh my god, there's a lot of people here. Yeah, they're all, they're all ready to start this fun little side mi- uh, main part of this mission. There is a couple people missing. We've actually talked to two of them already, Sally?
Zack, is there something here that you want to check out? We need to be at the community center by fifteen hundred today. Just think of talking in front of all those people.
Yeah, Jack, Gina, Polly, we have Olivia. George, a lot of suspects, Quint. So since you talked to the people we haven't even talked to yet, who are you? Milk Barn. It's Richard. Dude? You're rocking out! Dude! Everyone's wanting us to go to the community center Zack. They don't want, alright, can we actually walk in three minutes earlier or they're gonna get mad and say no, I gotta wait three minutes? I'd be quite disappointed. Are you serious?
Zack, Emily arranged for people to come between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred. We can't do anything here right now. Let's come back at the right time.
Are you serious? We gotta come back in two minutes? Hey look, they're all right freaking there! They're all right freaking there! Freaking there alright man! Um, over here there's a police car and a... I'll screw you again. Screw you again. I'll show off some of the sights here, I mean... Bean machines if you need it. Coffee's always healthy. Bean machines, very nice. I like crackers, crackers are tasty. Let's go ahead and save, get some more money. I have two minutes to kill anyway, because the game won't let me. It's funny, usual payphones you pay to use a phone. In this game, you get paid to use a phone. Oh wait, nope, lost a dollar. Then you get twenty-two more! Let me in! Alright mate guys, don't worry.
Really? I only have one minute left, I'm waiting you down!
Between three? Five o'clock? Everybody's like, "Where between three and five o'clock?" Usually. The Great Vale Community Center Mercury Theater. Oh he just pulls the door, doesn't even actually like turn the handle. Come on! Hot dog. Okay, now I'm beginning. Oh, wait!
Zack, I haven't been on stage like this since elementary.
What the heck?
I'm not some tree in the wind this time either. That was a tough role. I was a piece of scenery. Bright red tree.
Thank you, all for coming today. Getting right down to business. Agent Morgan, from the Federal Bureau of Investigations, wishes to speak with you.
Good afternoon. I'm Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Some of you are already aware by now-
So, I bet all of them are.
Truly a heinous, terrible crime. I've come to this town to solve the murder of this young, beautiful girl. And to bring the one responsible to justice.
What?
I asked to have you gathered here so I could share some advice in order to minimize the risk of further fatal incidents. Firstly, please, stay away from any dark, dangerous, isolated places. Those of you with children, especially your Anna's age, please. Secondly, avoid going out when it is raining.
Why do you bring that up?
There is a chance that the murderer is mimicking the story. Women should also be especially careful. I would hate to see more victims.
Oh the random music change!
Who's the fashion of Lily?
That's Carol, Thomas's sister. She owns a bar.
Duh, Thomas is like, "What the heck guy, don't talk about me like that." I'm not proud of her.
Excuse me. So, as I have said, avoid going outside when it is raining. Young women should be especially careful. Report anything or anyone suspicious immediately. The murderer will be caught and brought to justice. But you must all remain on guard until we do so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hmm. What's he doing? Why is he facing the, his back towards us?
When paying for our sins, we must not frown. The loss of Anna was for that debt.
You're a douchebag!
When purple fog covers our town, we'll all wander in hell, I predict. So says Mr. Stewart.
That ain't make sense!
Sure knows how to steal thunder.
Well then Zack, let's ask some questions before all these guys leave.
I don't know! Uh-oh.
Quite a performance. Mysterious, very poetic. But I don't think many of your audience appreciated it.
It didn't look hate when you said that. Why'd you say that?
Mr. Francis York Morgan, the purple fog appears with rain. Soiling and ruining our town. The evil does not drain. Find out why the town is soiled. Remove the source from which it oiled. Then and only then, your case is solved. But for this to happen, to solve crime, the problem must be solved at the time. It is not yet mine, that is, Mr. Stewart's town. But if you, Mr. York, find the right time to chat with him, that is- See? So says Mr. Stewart.
So you're asking-
So, Harry. You know something? But there's some reason why you can't tell me yet. Is that what you're trying to say?
Cut the poetic rubbish, Harry, and tell us what you know. We could force you to talk, you know?
Hey, what do you want, George? Talks to me?
Mr. Francis York Morgan, pay close attention to the signs. The omens and the premonitions. Small they may be, they still are fondness. And helpful to your investigations. So says Mr. Stewart.
Thanks for the warning, Harry. But don't worry. Me and Zack, we know what we're doing.
I do? I hate you sometimes. Coffee! Aww. Alright, let's go to the exit. Exit stage left, technically stage right. Hey, cigarettes, we need more of those to be safe. Let's talk to the fashionably late one.
Anna was an airhead.
What makes you say that?
What do you mean? Are you saying she was killed because she was an airhead? Or are you saying that she was an airhead for being killed?
I'm sure she's still an airhead even in heaven. She changed her hair every day. If she lost a pound, she'd be ecstatic. Gain one and she'd almost been tears. She broke many, many plates every day at the diner. And she'd always have a smile on her face. Always having fun. Everyone looked at her and knew she was a cute, adorable, loving airhead. But they would be smiling right along with her. I wouldn't be surprised if the angels smiled with her too.
Whoa! That's a creepy face.
Isaac and Isaiah said that Anna was a fairy of the forest. A goddess.
She didn't like that one. Hmm, maybe that wasn't the right idea to bring that one up. Good job Francis York Morgan, you know how to deal with the ladies. Give us some money. Twenty dollars. Thirty dollars. This guy!
Good evening, agent.
Brian the Insomniac, the Gravekeeper.
Good evening, Mr.?
Brian. The Gravekeeper. Brian.
Mr. Brian. I like the retro look. Auditioning for Little Grave on the Prairie?
Anna, oh, she was so beautiful. Too soon. Too, too soon to go to the grave. So sad, so sad.
I totally agree. That's why I'm here. Looking for the one who did it.
Who did it?
Were you close to her?
Hmmmm. Anna, her smile, so warm. Anna, blonde hair, so bright.
Oh, right he did.
There's a graveyard somewhere in town Zack. I'm not excited about the idea but, maybe we should at least check it out.
No. No! Alright, we need to talk to this guy eventually, let's talk to him now.
Quint, you're here too. I didn't think you were the town meeting kind of guy.
A friend of mine was killed, you know man? I'm not letting this one go quietly. I'll do anything to help you catch the scumbag who did this.
Thank you. But vigilance is not justice. Nothing good will come from desiring simple revenge.
Oh come on, I'm not that stupid. But I'm frustrated a bit just thinking that there's nothing I can do about it.
We each have a role, purpose in life, raison d'etre. Don't forget that.
I know, I know. Just don't preach to me, you're sounding like my old man.
Zack, wow. I'm in shock like a weasel in an electric chair. He just made me realize that I must be getting old.
That's not important! Alright, let's go talk to people we haven't talked to, because we gotta go to Quint's house probably after this one immediately. Polly's here! Let's talk to this person, she looks like she's freaking out or something. What's with the pot?
Oh my, my pot is getting cold.
What?
Hey, mister, my pot is getting cold.
You are... Who?
What are you saying? I'm Sigourney. Sigourney!
Sigourney, okay. Now, what is the matter? Can you explain?
No time for chatting. I need to hurry, my pot is getting colder. Oh, you're useless.
That's what I was about to say!
Zack, we've met all sorts today but, really, she takes-
The pot, she takes the-
Amazing.
Cooking pot. Ah, this man, I've been waiting for this man for a while.
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Please, call me York.
Wesley, owner of the gun store called Panda Bear. People around here call me the Gunsmith.
Call me the Gunsmith! Really?
Was there something you want to ask me?
How do you make a living running a gun store in a place like this? I'd be worried because there can't be that many customers.
Worry gives a small thing a big shadow. I do gunsmith work in my shop too. If you got the skills, the customers find you. All you need is a network.
True story!
I hope so.
Here's what I got. We got this thing. Uh, once you actually unlock this part, you'll actually can buy, buy stuff with mini toolbox. Which is actually really cool.
You've got quite a selection here.
A submachine gun, ammo-
Even today, a customer paid me to go to Seattle for some help. I just got back.
I see. Well, I'll be sure to visit your store sometime. I'd like for you to take a look at my gun.
Understood, look forward to it. The shop will be open again tomorrow. It's usually open from twenty hundred to oh six hundred. See you then.
Twenty, it's not even normal hours! No, this guy's the dude that we talked to earlier.
I'm US Special Agent Francis York Morgan. I presume you are the owner of the diner that Anna worked at?
That's right.
I'd like to ask you a few questions about Anna Graham. Did you notice anything strange about her prior to the incident? Nick? Are you hiding something?
No, nothing.
You're sure?
I'm sorry, but I don't like repeating myself.
That was pretty useless, Nick was never my favorite, I hate Nick!
Hey there FBI, I'm Keith Ingram.
Wait, you're the Quint's parent, but father?
FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan. Please, call me York, that's what everyone always calls me.
Okay, York, no problem man.
So, Keith. I hear you run the Milk Barn Convenience Store.
That's right man, rock and roll!
Do you sell raincoats there by any chance?
Yeah, but nobody ever buys them though. Anyone who wears one of them, I say just ain't a rocker. But you know, that scar of yours, now that scar rocks!
This scar rocks? Now that's a new one. I'll drop by your store soon and let's talk then.
Yeah, cool man, rock on FBI!
He's so weird! I like Nick. How did you?
Yes, I'm Lily.
But how did he? Well granted, but still!
I'm FBI Special Agent-
Agent York, right?
You are good.
The handsome special agent from the big city. The facial scar trademark. The way you introduce yourself. Everyone's talking about you.
Well, I can't say much about the scar. But the way I introduced myself, Zack and I consider it a kind of ritual of service.
No I didn't do, don't worry.
Everyone has their own rituals. It's like, always leaving the house left foot first. It's one of those things.
You certainly are a funny one.
So have you noticed anything strange or out of place recently?
The murder?
Well, Becky's been taking a couple of days off from work, but aside from that, I heard she was in shock after the murder. But-
You think there's something else?
Well, I took the boys along to see her today. She's always so kind to them and they love seeing her too. But she took in the boys and told me to wait outside. Something about a special secret between just the three of them. I just couldn't understand it.
Now that's interesting. Thank you Lily. Perhaps we should give Becky a visit too?
No, we are not going tomorrow, but I'll tell you that right now, Mr. Francis York Morgan. Alright, we'll talk to everybody, let's get out of here. I said I'll talk to everybody, let's get out of here. Fine, I won't leave just to go talk to George. Dang it game. I gotta go visit Becky right this minute. I'll just climb up or anyone?
Agent Morgan, here's your chance to get to know some of the townsfolk, don't let it go to waste.
I already talked to everybody at least once. Mr. Thomas.
Agent York, your words really made me think about Anna's death again.
They're supposed to?
How could one do such a terrible thing? I'm still in shock.
Thomas, I forgot to ask. You don't have a tattoo on your back, do you?
A tattoo? I do actually, but why?
Could you show it to me please?
What? Now? Here?
Yes, please. This is vital for our investigation.
Okay, if it's gonna help you any.
Well, I'm wondering who G is now, but aside from that... Did it tell you anything? It told me that you didn't kill Anna.
Of course not, what are you saying?
Well, you just made him mad.
You ought to see that tattoo Zack. A big heart with an arrow through it and "love G" in the center. I don't know when he got that done, but... We've all been through the eighties.
And he's the sensitive type.
Agent York, are you finished asking questions yet? When you're done, let me know, we'll all get dinner-
Want dinner? Want dinner now? Give me dinner. Food, 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 food. Screw you, I gotta get this question done now. No smoking, hmm. Aw, I knew I missed one! I, you don't, you never really talked to this guy. Meets Colonel Snake. Big boss.
So you're the FBI agent, are ya?
Sounds like Snake a little bit!
I'm FBI Special Agent Francis York Morgan.
I'm the general. I fought for my country in the Vietnam War.
A real-life war hero. So why are you living here?
Soldier, this is my hometown. After a man returns from war, there's no place to go other than his hometown. Your little speech, you mentioned the Raincoat Killer.
Was that a problem?
You imbecile! The Raincoat Killer's no myth, not mere folklore. Not a fairy tale. It's based on actual events that happened in this town.
Ugh!
It is. I'm interested. Can you tell me more about this?
You kids today don't even know how to ask for something right. Soldier, if you want to hear more, you come to my office.
So they can play?
He literally exudes raw power Zack. Despite the credibility issues, we should give him a visit.
Why do you wear the Sergeant Pet?
Calls himself a general, but isn't that a sergeant's uniform?
He's just a joke, I mean he- Usher, uh-huh. Uh-huh, mhm.
Agent York, you make any progress?
Howdy!
Of course, plenty. Tell me, Usher, when is Anna's funeral?
That's still undecided.
What are you doing?
Sally isn't really in any condition to do it right now.
I'm joking!
I don't see her here.
Cheer!
Anna was the sole reason for living, after her husband was deceased. Well, she's probably huddled up at home.
And I should probably take some time to pay her a visit.
Yes you should. And I'd appreciate it if you could too. But don't go too hard on her, okay?
Uh-huh. Let's see if we can get out of here now? Okay, I guess not, do have to talk to everybody, again.
Groundhog Day?
Are you getting closer to catching the murderer?
What?
Hello again Fiona.
No, it's not dead.
Good to see you here.
Nevermind. What are you talking about?
Doctor Johnson told me to be here.
My show?
He said it would be important.
Nevermind. That was good advice. He may be young, but he seems like a wise man.
Oh, and he's a very hardworking person too. Everyone thinks he's some kind of weirdo. But I don't think so at all. People don't understand why he's in the autopsy room all day. But I do. He's doing research to make the world a better place in the future. You know, he already made a fortune in LA with his career.
I did not know that.
You didn't? Oh, the doctor is a very rich man. He has a really big house over by the lake.
Amazing Zack, he must be loaded. Rich and young. A perfect combination.
But you don't get that feeling from him at all, do you? He doesn't show it. That's one of the things I like best about him.
Well, I could have been fooled if it weren't for you. Thanks for the valuable information Fiona.
Let's see, who have I not talked to yet? What effect will have here?
Can you tell me if you noticed anything strange about Anna before the incident?
Well, I'm not sure if this will be of any help, but-
Anything, no matter how small could be of help.
Well you see, the diner closes when it rains. Many shops do that around here, as you might have heard. Anyway, Anna always seemed unfocused the day after it rained. And came in late too. It was almost as if she used up all her energy the day before. Come to think of it, that was really strange. Did that imaginary monster really kill her?
It wasn't a monster.
Just a criminal.
Just a criminal. Criminal I'm going to catch and bring to justice.
Man, I like your cockiness. Alright, let's go talk to Polly now. Agent Anna.
Mr. Morgan, you're quite an impressive public speaker.
Really? Thank you Polly.
You reminded me a little of a play I saw when I was younger.
What kind of play? What kind of play?
I'm talking about back when this place was still called the Mercury Theater. When I was young, I used to come here often with my husband.
Uh-oh, it's never...
...of his soul. We'd come on the weekend to see the latest play. He'd always pretend to be uninterested. But I could tell he was excited inside. He was just one of those kind of guys, really, thinking about it now.
Really, Polly? So what's your favorite play?
Oh, well, I like so many. There was one in particular, but... I can't recall the name anymore. Oh, it was a very famous one, too.
Something by Shakespeare?
Oh, um...
Worst memory ever!
No, nothing. One more bell that doesn't ring anymore. I've always been forgetful about the plays we used to see anyway. Oh, and my husband would get angry at me for forgetting what we saw. He'd go on for hours retelling what the play was about. His eyes were so sparkling, like a happy young boy.
I see. So... What's your favorite play?
I almost forgot, Mister Morgan. We're going to have another guest soon. I have to get back and get things ready. Sorry for having to hurry away. I'll see you back at the hotel.
Zack, I think she could embarrass the toughest of the FBI's interrogators. She successfully avoided answering my question, Zack. Amazing! Jim. Thanks for your help in the forest. How are Isaac and Isaiah?
They're fine.
They really seem to love their grandpa.
Well, I guess they do, son. I want to keep them away from the filth of the material world as much as I can. Their mother agrees, which is why she lets me take care of them so often. And that's why I want you to solve this case quickly and go home. Those rumors about that scar of yours do more damage than good around here.
I guess I reek of the material world, don't I? I have to, in order to do my job. But I understand what you mean. I'd think the same if I was born in a place like this, Zack.
Yeah, I probably would too. Nice to people, Gina LaRose.
Hello again, Agent York. How are you?
Good, thanks. And you?
Oh, I'm feeling pretty good today.
Well, that's good to hear. Do you have any information that could help me out?
Information? Sounds difficult, and not my kind of conversation. Anyways, you should come by the gas stand again. I'll give you the best service in town.
Ooh!
Zack, perhaps you can tell me? Why did she bother coming here?
Uh, 'cause of this man right here.
I've nothing to say to you!
I haven't asked you anything yet, Jack.
Shut it! I might open up if you introduce me to... I don't know... A Ben Franklin or two.
Oh, what a creature. Guess there's always someone like him in every town.
Let's give him a Ben Frank! I believe that is everybody this time. Oh no, Richard! Had enough of giving up Richard!
So, finding your way around, okay?
Yes, pretty much. But some people are hard to get along with.
People problems, huh? I thought city folks were used to things like that. There's lots more people in the city than there are here.
True that.
Well, that's true. But I started simplifying things a bit. Here's my new way of thinking. It's simple, really. There's only three types of people. Criminals, victims, and investigators. Everyone else are just... Vegetables. Vegetables called...
Other people.
Other people.
You really are strange.
See! Oh, that's it, that's what I was waiting for!
Agent Morgan? I'd like to let everyone go home now. Let's go outside.
Something to point to me? I am rocking out still. So everybody's going home. That is... The end... Of episode eight. Now, this is where it gets difficult, because when you hit episode nine... It's the last episode you can do cer- do certain things. So I'll actually do a couple things here that... I need that doll, too. We'll go over that in a si- while, in a while, though.
Well then, Agent York, do you have any plans for this evening?
Not really!
I was going to head back to the hotel and go over my notes. I need to contact HQ and give a progress report, too.
Okay, and let's call it a day here.
Sounds good.
Contact my office when you finish your report. We'll pick you up tomorrow morning. Diane, the owner of the art gallery, should be back.
Alright!
Alright then, let's do that.
Hold on, Agent York. We're going out to eat at Nick's diner. Would you like to come with us?
The diner? That might be nice.
Thomas is a great cook, but Nick is the real deal. No visit to Greenville is complete without eating at the A and B.
I've been there once already.
Very appealing proposition. Zack, what do you think? We can always go back to the hotel after eating dinner. Or go directly back to the hotel. You decide, Zack.
Let's go eat with them! Mm-hmm. Guess Emily did want us there! Oh brap! So when you use the first aid kit, do you use a hundred bandages?
I've been sheriff here for... A long time now. And this is the worst murder I've ever seen.
Is this the thing that killed me?
We had our fair share of cases. But just the regular stuff. A high school kid shoplifting from the Milk Barn, maybe? Or some hot-headed kids fighting, fueled on liquor? Nothing more than that.
Agent York, what kind of cases have you dealt with in the past?
Not much different from those you've just mentioned.
Oh, dude, don't ask him!
The case I was on until last month... Well, the guy killed seven girls in a three-month period. He sawed their heads off from the neck and... Took them back to his house. He cleaned the skulls up and... Used them as utensils in his daily life. To eat from, or... As a urine cup. He hated women. That was his way of dealing with it. He'd fill skulls with...
Oh god, he's gonna keep talking!
And he'd down it in one gulp. For him, that was a holy ritual.
Why'd you even ask?
For me, he wasn't sane. A hundred percent. Drinking from his skulls... Well, that is one thing. But those he had used to relieve himself... He would then just... Use them to drink from, too. Yeah, that was too much for me. It's just not sanitary.
Not sanitary? That's probably not the problem for most of us.
What else? Ah, yes. An ingenious law school student raped over eight hundred victims.
Whoa!
Thank you, Agent York. Now, let's talk about something else.
You don't want to hear anymore? That's a shame, isn't it, Zack? I was just about to get to the good part, too.
Uh, you're...
It sounds like you live in a totally different world. I mean, you're like... An elite agent who just jumped out from a movie or something. In your eyes, we must look like we're just playing cops and robbers. Ugh, I give up, I can't compete with you.
Don't say that, Emily. The cases you have solved are all full-fledged crimes. A crime is a crime. Size doesn't matter. There is no big and small. Crimes... Always have a...
Criminal.
Criminal.
And a victim.
And a victim. No victim will ever welcome a crime, no matter what its size. So, fundamentally, there is no difference in size.
Interesting way to put it. But there is.
Well said, Agent Morgan. We work day and night to preserve peace and order in this town. You understand that, right?
Mm-hmm. The burger looks pretty good.
Of course, but still... I don't view shoplifting and... Anna's murder as the same level of crime.
Well, you're not supposed to meet...
Neither. I never even dreamt that... Such a thing could ever even happen.
It's happened before, though!
I keep on expecting to see Anna... Here in this diner, waiting on tables.
Excuse us, Agent Morgan. We should have made dinner a more uplifting experience. Let's call it a night.
Okay. Good night, then.
Alright, now, this is where we're gonna have some fun. We can go back to the hotel and end some episode, we ain't having this episode anytime soon. I mean, this episode is far from over. Or at least the session is. The first thing we are going to do is go to Sweary sixty-five. Oh, it's raining!